All right, I think we're good to go?
I have 6:59.
Okay, we're on TV, so... Tell me when it's...
Crêver pas.
Okay. I'd like to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order. We have two public hearings tonight regarding the proposed 2014 Consolidated Plan and regarding a moratorium on convenience stores. But items for final consideration, if the clerk would read number one.
Item number one, under final consideration, an ordinance regarding the Affirmative Action Advisory Board.
This has been discussed numerous times without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, under original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing relative to proposed revisions to Chapter 248 of the Code of the City of Schenectady regarding parking meters.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the change in the zoning of 10-90-1102 Crane Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution requesting review and recommendation of potential changes to the zoning code relative to casinos and gaming.
I am going to pull this from the agenda. I've had numerous phone conversations today with Dave Buco of Gillespie Group, and he feels there's not an urgency to moving this forward at this point in time when we don't even have a formal proposal. So, we will...it did come through committee, but we will hold this for a future meeting. And I also want the entire council to be here, and Mr. Erickson is out on business today, so we will hold that one. Okay, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Diaz Reddicks.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax sursuary filed by Zhu Mi Song.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax sursuary filed by 2627 Broadway LLC.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax sursuary filed by 2627 Broadway LLC regarding 827 Lincoln Ave.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution declaring a proposed wastewater engineering study is a Type II action and not subject to review under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Discussed in committee without objections on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement with New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Finance to deposit and increase the capital budget code that will be designated specifically for the CHIPS Fund by the amount of $1,275,035.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with...for the operation of the Quackin Bush Pool.
This is with the Boys and Girls Club without objection on consent. Item number 11.
13.
The 13th.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with...for the operation of the Front Street Pool.
This is with the YWCA without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the operation of the Central Park Pool.
Again, Boys and Girls Club without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the operation of the Hillhurst Pool.
Same situation without objection on consent. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution declaring April to be Jazz Appreciation Month in the City of Schenectady.
This will be taken out of order. Ms. Parazzo will present that. Number 17.
Number 17, a resolution recognizing the filmmaker Prince Sprav.
This will also be taken out of order. Ms. Porterfield will present that. Okay, number 18.
Number 18, a resolution recognizing Deacon Holmes from the Mount Olivet Church.
This will be presented at a later time, so without objection on consent. Item number 19.
Item number 19, a resolution recognizing Deacon Fraser from the Mount Olivet Church.
Also will present it at another time, so without objection on consent. Item number 20.
Item number 20, under Contract and Supply, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Surplus...Surpass Chemical Company, Inc. for liquid chlorine.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Number 21.
Item number 21, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract for hot-in-place asphalt recycling.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Number 22.
Item number 22, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Empire Paving of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Number 23.
Item number 23, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract for construction at the water treatment plant.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And item number 24.
Item number 24, a resolution authorizing the city to enter to a contract for engineering services for the North Ferry Street Pump Station Replacement.
Mr. Riggy, roll call. All right, item number 24.
This will be 25.
Or 25, excuse me.
Under original consideration, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of parcels of real property.
Discussed in claims committee tonight without objection on consent. And then item number 26.
Item number 26, a resolution accepting title to various properties from the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency.
Also discussed in claims tonight without objection on consent. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Parazzo, seconded by Mr. Riggy, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I will now call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 28, 2014. I will ask you to rise through the invocation by the Reverend Dave Tredum of Shreve, Ganesh Mendir of Schenectady.
Thank you, madam. Madam Chairman, Representatives of Honor of Mia, the distinguished councilors, beloved brothers and sisters, a very, very good evening. Let us all clap our hands, and we close our eyes and pray very sincerely to that almighty Lord. Adorable Lord of Mercy, Source of all sources, Redeemer of this world, glory, glory unto thee. Blessed Lord, please accept our humble obeisances, heartfelt prayers, and sweet love. Sweet Lord, please bless the most esteemed Mia with the ability, capacity, integrity to continue to perform his excellent work. Please bless the anointed councilors with the erudition, wisdom, and passion to execute their duties diligently. And please bless the rest of the sweet Assembly for the extraordinary contributions for the ultimate welfare of this committee and community. May this meeting and all other endeavors be successful, and may there be great endable historical recordings. Omnipresent Lord, please bless every residence of this city with fortune, auspiciousness, and abundant bliss. Please bless us that we can shed our ego, prejudice, and animosity, and live in the realm of goodwill, understanding, and love. Bless us so we can grow unhindered physically, mentally, intellectually, emotionally, morally, and spiritually. May our hearts be divine vibrations, may our words be glorious illuminations, and may our actions be inspiration. Father, forgive us for our mistakes, our offenses, and our sins that we committed knowingly and unknowingly. May peace be unto all, may joy be unto all, may divine blessings be unto all. God bless this Assembly, God bless this city, God bless America. Thank you very much.
I'll ask Reverend Greigsby to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo. Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Erickson is absent. Mr. Kozier. Mr. Riggy. Mr. Mootivaren. Ms. King.
Present. All right, tonight we're going to start the meeting with another one of our presentations regarding economic strengths. As you may remember, in November, the City Council kicked off an initiative which includes a monthly review of the economic strengths which enrich the city of Schenectady. This review includes presentations by an array of economic contributors, including locally-based corporations and industry, area business districts representing small and family-owned businesses, and other economic sectors, from health care to service to education and nonprofits. These presentations highlight the economic impact these local businesses or organizations have on Schenectady's economy, including generated income, number of local jobs, innovation, and production, along with a review of the history and future planning of the business. Tonight, the City Council is excited to announce that we have Mona Golub, Vice President of Public Relations and Consumer Services for Price Chopper, on hand to present as part of this series. Price Chopper, also known as the Golub Corporation, exists to help people feed and care for themselves and their families. As noted on the company's website, we are an innovative retailer of products and services and recognize that consistently satisfying our customers is key to our success. Price Chopper is committed to their customers, teammates, and shareholders, and is planning to offer their customers the same personalized service that was introduced over 75 years ago. In addition to being the official spokesperson for Price Chopper, Mona Golub combines her love for the arts, music, and theater by working those passions into helping to drive store activities and community engagement. Please join me in welcoming Mona Golub from Price Chopper. Mona?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. And thank you, and good evening to all of you. It's an opportunity that we very much appreciate to celebrate our Schenectadian roots. Price Chopper, the Golub Corporation, our mission, much of which the Chairwoman just said, the Golub Corporation exists to help people feed and care for themselves and their families. We are an innovative merchandiser of products and services and recognize that helping to fulfill the expectations of those who rely on us, customers, teammates, community, and shareholders, is our key to our success, and our sustainable growth and health is truly contingent upon the satisfaction of the people who we serve. We are, in fact, a homegrown company. We are American-owned, we are family-managed, and we are now in our fourth generation. And we consider ourselves a family in business as opposed to being a family business. And the emphasis there is that our decisions are made in the best interests of the business, always have been. But the story began quite some time ago when my great-grandfather, Louis Golub I, Lieb, arrived here in Schenectady from Russia in 1900. He first opened a lunchroom, and then a dairy store, and eventually a wholesale grocery in 1922. And that was a warehouse of sorts at that point in time. Shortly before his very premature death in 1930, he merged the Golub Wholesale Foods with another wholesaler so that his sons, Ben and Bill, could have a solid future. But Ben and Bill, they were pioneers, and they ended up gathering all of the ideas and concepts that they could, and they opened the area's first self-service supermarket in upstate New York, the Public Service Market in Green Island. So where did the name Central Markets that some of you may remember come from? Well, the next two stores ended up closer to, yes, Central Park. And that's where the name Central Markets originated from, and that, in fact, was the name of the chain until the early '70s. I had fun searching for old photos of our Schenectady stores, the Bellevue branch. So Ben and Bill, my great-uncle and my grandfather, they were all about service and supporting the community and innovation. A few of the concepts that they're best remembered for are the 4-H grower-producer programs that encourage local farmers by offering to buy back the best of their crop. They started the Empire State Red Label Program that established the egg industry in New York State. They got tired of buying eggs from elsewhere. They also began the S&amp;H Green Stamp Program here that was considered to be the original customer loyalty reward program, and they helped to form the Food Marketing Institute, which is the national organization around food marketing that still exists to this day. Next came Lewis and Neil. But progress during the Ben and Bill era, let's see, I just read through those, thank you, we can switch to the next one. Lewis and Neil. As Ben and Bill's sons, they really grew up in the business. Let's see, under Lewis and Neil in the early '70s is when Central Markets became one of the first supermarkets in the nation to be open 24 hours a day, and Central Markets gave way to Price Chopper in 1972, 1973. By the turn of the century under Lewis and Neil, the size of the chain had quadrupled. Some of you may remember the old Eastern Parkway store that's since been rebuilt across the street from what was the community center for some time in the original Eastern Parkway store. And this store, for those of you who go back a little further, you may remember that it was an original train station in Schenectady, and there are still photos of that train station, and that you could see where the tracks existed in the back room of the store, which was Jam Fields before it became Price Chopper. I remember working in that store, actually, and trying to move heavy pallets of juice across those cracks in the back floor that used to kind of expand every winter because the train tracks had been there. It wasn't easy. And of course, the 24-hour signs, that was shortly after we went 24 hours a day. And that was the original Glenville store on the other side, of course, of Schenectady County. Neil and Louis. Now, this is the Price Chopper Supercenter on Eastern Parkway amidst construction, and that's the store that exists there today. And the ribbon cutting for that very store back in 1993, that's a Mohawk Commons store in Niskiuna. Where are we today? We've got 133 stores in six different northeastern states, and 22,000 very valued teammates who collectively own more than 47% of the company's privately-held stock. And that is quite unusual to have a privately-held company that shares that much of its holding with its teammates. We're very proud of that. And you may remember that we celebrated our 80th anniversary back in 2012. This is where those stores exist all over the map, but the fact of the matter is, our heart and soul, right here in Schenectady, New York. We now have a new main office building. The original was on Erie Boulevard way back when, and then when the store chain grew to about 25 under Ben and Bill, we built a large warehouse in Rotterdam. That was christened in 1961. And just about four years ago, we were proud to open our new main office right at 461 Knott Street in downtown Schenectady. It's a LEED-certified gold building, sustainable building, and it was constructed on a brown field that had been abandoned for many, many years. So our Rotterdam distribution complex, which now that our main office has moved, has the room to grow so that it can provide for the growth and health of the company. Today, in terms of our Schenectady stores, we've got the one on Eastern Parkway I've spoken of, Niskiuna at Mohawk Commons, of course Glenville, and Rotterdam on Altamont Avenue. Our employment numbers in Schenectady alone are 2559 in the county, and specifically in the City of Schenectady, 1,000-plus teammates of ours are working here in the City of Schenectady. As far as our community relations and philanthropy, something near and dear to us since the very beginning when Ben and Bill laid that foundation, we are committed to supporting efforts that help youth, seniors, education, diversity and inclusion, health and human services, culture and the arts, emergency response, and even activity, as in sporting activities. Community connectivity is very important to us, and that means that when Ellis Hospital does a community needs assessment, we figure out how we can be a part of that. Health, wellness, and nutrition are very important. The RX Impact Project that we just won an award for nationally that helped with diabetes in the Hamilton Hill area gave us another opportunity to help our own community here at home. And of course, when the city came calling, as they do for good events and opportunities with the American-made movie, we were happy to be there as well. It's about connectivity. In the community for good. Our core values, as an American-owned and privately-held and managed company, we hold ourselves to the following core values. All of our decisions begin and end with our customers in mind. We treat our teammates with respect, value their individuality, and share our successes with them. We value our reputation, and we hold ourselves accountable to the highest standards of personal integrity and business ethics. We're a socially-aware and environmentally responsible company, and we look to nourish the communities that we serve and the people who live in them. As for our future, well, we're going to remain committed to our mission and vision and core values. We're going to look for opportunities both for organic growth from the ground up or new store growth via acquisition. We will bolster and diversify our corporate social responsibility and always, always be looking to evolve and reinvent ourselves. You've seen the public service market evolve to Central Markets, evolve to Price Chopper, and now you may have seen and or heard about Market Bistro. Our newest, which also gives some idea as to where in the future we may be heading, with new ideas and new concept stores, meeting trends and needs of consumers. That is what it's about. Our next generation of stores are right around the corner, and you will be the first in this area to see them because this is our hometown. Three generations after a seed was planted by Louis Lieb-Golub, and we are still proud to call Schenectady home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona, and thanks to your family for the commitment to Schenectady. All right, we have two out-of-order resolutions. The first is recognizing April as Jazz Appreciation Month. Ms. Parazzo.
If I can ask the board members of A Place for Jazz to come up, along with the Musicians' Union people to come on up. Come right back behind the rail here. Come on right over here, Alice. I have my biting problem under control. Good. So it's my honor to ask for the floor for this resolution as a former jazz club owner from back, way back in 1992, and as a former member of the board for A Place for Jazz, and just in recognition and celebration of the robust jazz community and the amount of jazz, you know, venues through our history, the Van Dyke, now the Stockade Inn, you know, A Place for Jazz, which brings national acts to the City of Schenectady, and it just, lots to celebrate. So although we have a somewhat broad brush stroke of jazz to celebrate in our resolution, the specifics of how they have, you know, impacted Schenectady, I think, is really important too, so I'll ask you for the floor.
You have it.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing April as Jazz Appreciation Month in the City of Schenectady. Whereas jazz is an original American art form that affirms the noblest aspirations of our national character, individual discipline, perseverance, and innovation. And whereas jazz has produced some of America's leading creative artists and ranks as one of America's greatest exports to the world. And whereas jazz has inspired dancers, choreographers, poets, novelists, filmmakers, classical composers, and all types of musicians, and the arts education and appreciation for contributions for all American art forms is fundamental to the people of the City of Schenectady. And whereas the Schenectady Amsterdam Musical Union Local 85-133 of the American Federation of Musicians was chartered on August 14, 1900, and has represented professional musicians in Schenectady County continuously for 114 years. AFM Local 85-133's mission is to further the performance of live professional music in our local community and keep live music live. Union musicians perform at events such as Jazz Appreciation Month, Jazz on J, Schenectady Summer Night, and regularly at Proctor's Theater and numerous other Schenectady venues. And whereas the City of Schenectady recognizes the outstanding work of jazz artists, educators, and enthusiasts in the impact this American art form has made on our way of life, now therefore be it resolved that April of 2014 is designated Jazz Appreciation Month in the City of Schenectady, and urge everyone to take the time to enjoy this great American form of art. I move the resolution.
All right, is there a second, Ms. Mootivaren? All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations and thank you.
As representative for A Place for Jazz for the board, we've been here since 1987. We're very proud that we're part of Schenectady and the community, that we bring people from all over the Capitol District from...to come here and then listen to music, that we're part of an education system and a cultural awareness system for performance in the arts and jazz. So thank you for the opportunity and for your support.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the City Council and the City of Schenectady for honoring us today. It's a...it's an honor for me to be here and represent the almost 150 musicians that are in our organization, and I thank you.
All right, thank you again. All right, our second out-of-order resolution is one recognizing filmmaker Prince Sprav. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Ms. Porterfield. Is that everyone?
Yes.
Madam President? You have the floor.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I'm really pleased that I know this young man. I met him when he first came to Schenectady and started attending church with his grandmother, and I attended the same church, and to see where he is today, and I know that he's been to Massachusetts to speak based on the work that he's done, and impacted the lives of a lot of young people that we see with here tonight, and thank you all for coming as well. So we have a resolution for you today. Recognize...a resolution recognizing the filmmaker Prince Sprav. Whereas Prince Sprav is an independent filmmaker and the artistic director of Revolution Studios, a youth-centered program at Schenectady High School that fosters creative expression and serves as a safe haven for high school students. And whereas Fast Life, a feature-length film about life, death, hope, pain, the forces that shape teenagers, and emphasizes the need to go beyond the walls of school to help them, was conceived, performed, and scored by Schenectady High School students. The movie was shot with only four pieces of equipment. And whereas the idea for the film Fast Life originated with the students when Sprav, as he is called, gave them some beats he produced and suggested they write raps over them. The result is a complex, hard-hitting film ensemble that defies its amateur beginning. at Proctor's Theater in April 2013 to a packed house, and the film later went on to be screened at Willa Fest, a film and musical festival in Brooklyn in September 2013. And whereas through the acceptance of each student as a unique individual with skills and talents, and through positive encouragement, Prince Sprav has helped many teenagers turn their lives around. He is described as awesome, not only a teacher, an older brother. And the student stated, "Aside from teaching, he gives advice on life." Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the mayor of the city of Schenectady pause in their deliberations to recognize Prince Sprav and Revolution Studios for the caring, commitment, and dedication to young people in the city of Schenectady and helping them prepare for a bright future.
Madam President, I'd like to move the resolution. All right, is there a second? Ms. Parrazo, all in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
First off, I would like to just thank God for just His many blessings, and I would just like to thank the Schenectady City Council, and I would like to personally thank you for this opportunity and the city of Schenectady. And I would like to thank my beloved students, my little brothers and sisters who work hard with me all the time. I just want to say that we can't give up on our youth. We have to maintain hope that these kids are the future, and they've worked very hard with me, and we're currently on a new mission to address the issue of teenage pregnancy. And Revolution Studios, we plan on being around and really trying to make an impact in our community, and with your help and with your support, we need y'all. And we just want to say thank you, and thank you again for having us here.
Thank you.
I'm just going to allow them just to introduce themselves real quick and just kind of just give their first and last name.
Hi, I'm Sanaya Fountain.
Jasmine Bernard.
Joshua Charles.
Naija Helet.
Rob Meyer Stevenson.
Lavoria Davis.
Kiara L.
Kiara Terry.
Mahogany Thompson.
Deandre McKnight.
Kadim Defradis.
Stefan Goman.
And these students are young producers and actors and actresses, and they worked hard on this project, and they're currently working hard on this new project as well. And I just hope that they just continue on this endeavor to just pursue their career and entertainment.
Thank you. Thank you again. All right. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is regarding the proposed 2014 consolidated plan. I have 13 people signed up to speak. The first is Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Protim, on the community loan block grants. Mostly it's that we need to take a look at where are we looking at this. This year, we conducted, for about the fourth straight time, we've conducted the public hearing on the same day the RFP went out. This needs to stop. We need to be able to have an actual sit-down of actually where this money is going to go. This is the 15%. This is the front-of-the-house money. This is the money that goes to the different organizations and to within the community. We had a five-year consolidated plan that dealt with, that you're supposed to do jobs, and we haven't even dealt with anything dealing with jobs whatsoever. We need to re-vigorate this piece, and by having the public hearing without having any input within the RFP, that's no good. In October, we have asked every year, you're supposed to have a public hearing on the back-of-the-house money. The back-of-the-house money is the money that is paid to the staff, like the Affirmative Action Office. In this office, they have completely failed in dealing with affirmative action within this county and within this city. We need to be able to put in goals and put in guidelines of how we're going to be able to do this. Also, too, is there's $800,000 that was done back in 2010 that was recaptured, and it's been playing ping-pong between the code enforcements and SNAP without having any kind of direction of where that money is actually going to be. And we need to sit down and actually look at what's going on. Within 13 months, we've got to have a five-year consolidated plan that's due next up. Where is the public hearings on these? How is this going to be conducted? We need to have a plan that's going forward, and there is nothing there. And the affirmative action was installed in January 1 of 2007 with Chasey Chance, and a year later, she retired, and then in July 1, they put in Mary Kachuski, July 14, 2008. Here it is almost nearly six years later, and we've gotten zero results out of that office. We need to be able to move forward and to be able to help. We need to take a look at a broad pan. We need to dust off the pages from the five-year consolidated plan. We need to know which direction is. I mean, every year, you guys come back and says, "Well, we want to have input into where this 15% of this money and what organizations are going where," and it's the same old thing. You come right back to the same thing, and it's just rubber-stamped, rubber-stamped, and that's exactly what happens. And we need to stop the cycle, and the only way we're going to be able to do it is to be able to sit down and conduct these public hearings. We actually need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Joya.
Okay. Camille, right? Yep, Camille Sazanowski.
Everyone should have, thank you very much for having me here this evening. Everyone should have received a copy of our put-together petition, our hastily put-together petition. It's a very positive petition with regard to funding of the Stymets Park program. The Goose Hill neighborhood and the Stymets Park Association have been involved with the planning, the nuts and bolts, and the execution of the master plan for the park, which has been long neglected and overlooked. The $4,000 in CDBG money is critical to the operation and management of the park. It will allow one to two people to be employed four evenings per week, or four days per week and four evenings, and that'll be about 18 hours a week. And that person will also be responsible for maintaining a clean and healthy environment in and around the bathhouse and the park itself, as well as scheduling for the rentals of the pavilion and the bathhouse, thus furthering our goal of self-support. The park is making a resurgence, and it's our hope to bring it back to its fullest potential. But that won't happen unless we have everyone's full and total support for this funding. And we also have, this is very shameless, but we also have a very urgent need for tables and chairs for our summer programs at the park, as well as a stove and a refrigerator. And if anybody has any scratches and dents around that are very usable, we'd love to have them to supply the kitchen. And in closing, I'd like to say that if you have any doubt that this $4,000 is necessary, I'd like to ask each and every one of you to kindly think back to your childhood or your adolescence, or your adult years, or to ask a relative about their memories of Stymets Park, and they'll all be very, very positive. And it's our goal to create new memories, and that $4,000, I'm certain, will enable several young people to participate to the fullest extent in the park. And in closing, we will be having an open house for the first time showcasing the bathhouse and the pavilion, May 17, at 11 o'clock in the morning. It's a Saturday, and everyone is welcome to attend. You'll get the chef's tour. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Joya.
I'm Patricia Joya. I just wanted to reiterate what my good leader has just said about the park. I stopped over there today, and it's just a great place. There were children on the swings, their mothers there with them, very content, very good place to have their children play. And I just hope that you all will support this because I think it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing for our neighborhood, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Demone Farley. Did I pronounce that right?
Demone.
Demone, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will be extremely brief here, but I'm here to speak on the behalf of the Hamilton Hill Art Center. As a community, I don't think that there's any clear reflection of the things that we value as to how we spend our money. As a lifelong Schenectady resident, I grew up in the Hamilton Hill Art Center, and it has exposed me to things that I probably would have never had a chance to see. Just two weekends ago, at the Craig Street Boys and Girls Club, I hosted a family-community unity day. We fed over 200 people. A local barbershop, SNS Barbershop on State Street, they gave away over 50 free haircuts. It was a beautiful day, and the members of the community came out and supported it because that's what we need to do. The Art Center acts as a staple in our community, and we need to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Carter.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Carter, and I've lived in the city of Schenectady for more than 30 years, and I very much appreciate this opportunity to come to talk about the use of federal funds through the consolidated plan process. I'm employed part-time by the Schenectady Inner City Ministry, and I also serve on the Hamilton Hill Art Center's Board of Directors. Both of these organizations have addressed needs of some of our city's most vulnerable citizens for over 45 years. On behalf of Sicum, I want to first note that we at Sicum appreciate the city's continuing support for our free summer lunch program and the activities in the public parks. I think most of you know that last year, we served almost 55,000 lunches, and this year will probably hit 60,000. On the other hand, we're disappointed to see that our request for security deposit program has not been recommended for funding. This allocation would have supported a revolving loan fund for security deposits for non-public-assistance households, and this is a real need in our city. And on behalf of the Hamilton Hill Art Center, I want to say that we very much appreciate the city's recommendation of continued funding. These funds will be used for Project Art Reach, our out-of-school-time programming for school-aged children. Project Art Reach provides an average of 30 children a day with educational programming, six days a week, year-round. Project Art Reach addresses the following community needs. Children and youth need a safe, creative, culturally supportive place to go during the unsupervised hours after school and in the summer. Children and youth also need adults who support pro-social activities and positive peer groups. And low-income working parents need easily accessible, free childcare after school and during the summer. On a final note, I want to ask that you reconsider the Hamilton Hill Art Center's request for $30,000 for energy efficiency renovations. This is a one-time request and would have a significant impact on the operating costs of this organization. Thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you. Lynda McFarlane.
Madam Council President and Council members, I'm Lynda McFarlane, the Executive Director of the Community Loan Fund. We've recently opened our satellite office in Schenectady in the Hamilton Hill area. I'd like to break down what we do into three categories. One is we loan money to low-income individuals for residential purchase or home repair. We offer loans to minority and women-owned businesses, quite often low-income as well, and we loan money to nonprofit organizations that service those individuals in the community that are in need. The second thing that we do is we offer training and technical assistance. We offer that to individuals who are interested in opening a business or may have a small business and need some assistance. Our eight-week business training course is being held in Schenectady starting this Saturday in our office. We're very pleased to be doing that. And we offer a variety of workshops and one-on-one counseling. The third thing that we do, which brings me to why I'm presenting to you today, is we raise all of our funds through investments, donations, and grants. We have pledged, the loan fund has pledged, to loan $1.9 million in Schenectady through 2016, so over the next three years. $400,000 in 2014, $750,000 in 2015, and another $750,000 in 2016. And as much as I like to talk about numbers, the real measure here is the impact those dollars will have in Schenectady. We anticipate that through 2016, those dollars will bring 62 units of affordable housing, either new or maintained housing, 57 jobs, either created or retained, and additional 15 loans to minority and women-owned businesses. We like to measure that impact. That's what makes a difference. We also have applied for a grant, a federal grant, that is a matching funds grant. So our request to you in the budget of $40,000 may actually turn into $80,000 for us to turn around and use for lending or technical assistance in Schenectady. That's very powerful. I'd like to thank you to Mayor McCarthy and to council members for including the Community Loan Fund in your budget.
Thank you. Kareem Adin Hassan. Got that right?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, it's good to see a lot of you I haven't seen in a while. I'm Kareem Adin Hassan. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Hamilton Hill Art Center. And you've heard a lot of the testimony from Ms. Carter and also Mr. Farley, two of our board members, so I'll try not to go over that, but to say a couple of other things. First, I'm also a member of the Electric City. I live here in Schenectady. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, our executive director, Omie Cooper, and our staff, I want to thank the city for its recommendation for the Hamilton Hill Art Center to receive continued funding through the CDBG grant program. The funds, as Sharon said, will be used for our Project Outreach, which is a free after-school and summer drop-in arts program for kids between the ages of five and 18. Now, we all know the problems in the city of Schenectady, particularly the Hamilton Hill and Vale neighborhoods, based on census data, which shows poverty rates for families and children 5 to 17 living in the 12307, which is where our agency is located, zip code, as being 64.3%. According to the 2009 to 2012 American Community Survey, their selected economic characteristics, the figure is almost double the citywide rate for the same demographic, almost four times the comparable rate for the county, and more than three times the comparable rate for New York State. In saying that, I just wanted to say that we, as the Hamilton Hill Art Center, are in the community. We are in Census Track 21002, and we've been there for 45 years. We continue to provide exceptional arts and programming year-round, and most of our individuals benefit from the onsite programming. They're all low-income people. They're also multi-
board members, so I'll try not to go over that, but to say a couple of other things. First, I'm also a member of the Electric City. I live here in Schenectady. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, our Executive Director, Omie Cooper, and our staff, I want to thank the city for its recommendation for the Hamilton Hill Art Center to receive continued funding through the CDBG Grant Program. The funds, as Sharon said, will be used for our Project Outreach, which is a free after-school and summer drop-in arts program for kids between the ages of five and 18. Now, we all know the problems in the city of Schenectady, particularly the Hamilton Hill and Vale neighborhoods, based on census data, which shows poverty rates for families and children 5 to 17 living in the 12307, which is where our agency is located, zip code, as being 64.3%. According to the 2009 to 212 American Community Survey, their selected economic characteristics, the figure is almost double the citywide rate for the same demographic, almost four times the comparable rate for the county, and more than three times the comparable rate for New York State. In saying that, I just wanted to say that we, as the Hamilton Hill Art Center, are in the community. We are in Census Track 21002, and we've been there for 45 years. We continue to provide exceptional arts and programming year-round, and most of our individuals benefit from the onsite programming. They're all low-income people. They're also multi-ethnic, pluralistic, and we're a safe haven for them to come to in a community that's in flux. Another thing is that our mission is to provide African and African-American arts and culture of the diaspora to all who come to our doors. Our Project Outreach program, Art Reach, has provided our core program for over 25 years, and we have expanded on it with a New Orleans-style brass band that, with instructors who are also from the school district, perform events throughout the capital district. Now, I'm short with only 16 seconds, so I'll end by saying this. We've seen a major increase in our clientele because of the fact that one of our neighbors is now out of business. We are now exponentially increasing our people, and we'd like to ask that more funds could be added to that request. And last but not least, the arts deepen our understanding of the human spirit. It extends our capacity to comprehend the lives of others. It allows us to imagine a moral, just, and human world. Through the diversity of feeling, their variety of forms, their multiplicity of inspiration, the arts make our culture richer and more reflective. Thank you for your consideration.[681.23][681.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.[683.23][683.23](APPLAUSE). Nancy Johnson.
Hi, good evening. I'm with the YWCA Northeastern New York, and I thank you for the opportunity to let me speak here tonight. On behalf of the YWCA, we are thanking you for your support for this consolidated plan for funding the Front Street Pool for this year. The YW has overseen the operation since 1997, and it's a much-needed recreation area for the youth of the city of Schenectady. The program offers youth and their families a chance to participate in recreation swimming, swimming lessons, and develop an interest in a lifelong skill. In ideal times, Schenectady municipal swimming pools would be open and free, like they were when I was a kid. And right now, we don't live in those times. So it is, the YW has in the past underwritten the cost of the operating for the Front Street Pool, and as a nonprofit agency, we just don't have the funds at this time. So the support is very much appreciated, and we'd like to thank you again for your support for the funding, and we'll see you at the pool.
Okay, thank you very much.[761.01][761.01](APPLAUSE). Reverend Stacy Midge.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about the consolidated plan, and in particular about the distribution of community development block grants. In this time of increased need in our community and decreased funding across the board in this community and across our country, it is crucial, I believe, that we distribute our funds in a way that supports nonprofits that serve our children and those in our community who are most in need, rather than, in some cases, things like code enforcement and demolition. Specifically, I strongly urge you to reconsider the request of the Hamilton Hill Art Center. Reallocating funds for the renovation of the Hamilton Hill Art Center would allow them to be more energy-efficient, in turn, more cost-efficient, and more able to serve children who live in low-income neighborhoods and are raised in low-income families. I also encourage you to reconsider SICOM's request for, Schenectady Inner City Ministry's request for the security deposit program, which is a very small request of only $6,000, which helps families get back on their feet in times of great need. These and other programs that address housing and jobs and education and children's needs would be, I think, more true to the intent for community development block grants. Thank you.
Thank you.[867.07][867.07](APPLAUSE). Joe Kelleher.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Kelleher, and I'm a resident of the city. Madam President, City Council, I've had an opportunity to take a look over the proposed consolidated plan and have been hearing some really wonderful things about not only the possibility of creating jobs and allowing people to stay in their homes, items like the YMCA, the Hamilton Hill Art Center, our parks and our pools. To invest in the youth and the people here in the city of Schenectady is truly a benefit that will help us all along, and to invest in this, the community will allow it to grow. One of the things I did have an opportunity to take a look at, though, and to stop from printing out the 90-some-odd pages that we had, I put it up on my tablet here, and I noticed that on one of the pages, there's a price of $426,000 going to the engineering department for street rehabilitation for only one and a half miles, for only half a mile of roads. Now, I did some research with one of the local municipalities and made a couple phone calls, and at only $125 per square foot for a whole mile of road, that would only cost about $200,000 for milling and paving. So to get a half a mile out of $425,000, $426,000 seems like an awful high price. So I hope that the City Council will take a look and reconsider some of the funds that are going out to these and make sure that the prices and the monies that were going out to these are being used properly. The City Council has a responsibility to the people of the city of Schenectady, a financial responsibility and to be held accountable to them. These are our funds. These funds belong to us, and that's where they need to go to. We need to have full disclosure, and I hope that that's what you'll provide. Thank you.
Thank you.[1012.01][1012.01](APPLAUSE). Reverend Phil Grigsby.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and Council President, members of the Council. Wanted to read this statement in the interest of time and because we only have three minutes. Very glad to be here this evening. I'm Director of the Schenectady Inner City Ministry and a city resident. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on the proposed consolidated plan. This budget always has difficult choices. As you well know, we are still in very challenging fiscal times. I don't envy you the trade-offs and difficult choices you need to make. I want to make some brief comments on SICOM's two applications and then comments on several other areas. In terms of the summer lunch program, all of us involved with summer lunch program, which will be here very soon, appreciate the city's continuing partnership to support feeding hungry children. For too many, it is the first meal of the day; for some, it is the only meal. With your help, last year, we provided help with almost 50,000, 55,000 lunches. We're planning on more sites for this year, and with your help, we can keep moving in that direction. While I'm talking about summer lunch, I would be remiss at this point if I did not ask the council members personally to consider coming together on a single day to provide lunch. We operate with volunteer teams at most sites. We provide the lunch, you provide the service. I ask you to consider a day when you could do this as a team during the usual lunch hour. Be glad to work with you on that. In terms of our security deposit program, I also applied for a smaller allocation, as was mentioned. Last year, it was not funded because we were told there were remaining funds. We used those up last year. It helped 25 families get into housing who were previously homeless. We run in partnership with SCAP. We did what was requested. Now, we are told that the only security deposits recommended are through Bethesda House. However, as you likely know, Bethesda House works primarily with single individuals, not families. I ask a reconsideration to see a way, whether through us or through SCAP, for funding for security deposits for homeless families. The more rapidly a family can be housed after being homeless, the more likely is their success. This is not duplication because DSS only provides for families on DSS, and most landlords do not accept the DSS security agreement. Although this housing market has its challenges, landlords still mostly require a cash deposit prior to entry. SCAP's request for home funding was not recommended for any funding. If not our program, perhaps a SCAP program could provide comparable security deposits Very short time, ask for your reconsideration of the Art Center in terms of their application for energy assistance. Thank you for the support for the Community Loan Fund, which we had talked about last year. I'm concerned that support for affordable housing providers, BNI and the Land Trust are at the same level. Because of funding cuts, both operate on reduced schedules, I encourage the city to strengthen its partnership with the two groups beyond what is required for home funding for operating support. I urge you to carefully scrutinize areas in which individual items and allocations show any increase. It's only fair because so many are the same as last year. The ones that show an increase stick out, and it's important to review them to see if they're justified. I encourage you to review carefully both items within the city budget and those contract and nonprofits.
And I need you to summarize.
The document is before you. I, finally, in reference to the article on Saturday, taking down derelict homes, if the city is looking for demolition funds, I recommend the council allocate what was proposed for paving to be put into demolition.
Reverend Grigsby, your time is up. Please finish.
Statement's before you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.[1274.15][1274.15](APPLAUSE). Charles Bedir, I'm pronouncing that correctly, from Habitat for Humanity.
I'm Charles Becker. I'm the President of the Board of the Local Habitat for Humanity. Jeff Clark is unfortunately not able to come tonight. I wanted to thank the City Council and the mayor and the city employees for supporting Habitat over the years and reinforce the need for the funding that's been provided to help build new houses and house more middle- and low-income families, especially in the north side of the city. Habitat provides thousands of, tens of thousands of hours of volunteer time to build these houses. We need help in acquiring the land and demolishing the buildings that are there and building a new neighborhood, and thank you again.
Thank you.[1340.65][1340.65](APPLAUSE). James Flack from Better Neighborhoods.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Council. My name is James Flack. I'm Assistant Director for Better Neighborhoods, speaking here on behalf of my superior, Ed August. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding the consolidated plan and funding for Better Neighborhoods. As part of this, I want to express support for the community of housing improvement agencies in the city. We view Habitat for Humanity, the Community Land Trust, and, in particular, the Community Loan Fund as important partners in our work of improving both the quality of life and the quality of housing in our city. We strongly support their efforts here in the city, and we value them as partners and trusted supporters. In particular, we think the Community Loan Fund has done a wonderful job of supporting us, of providing technical assistance to Better Neighborhoods, and helping us build our homes here in the city. As you may know, BNI is this year commemorating its 47th year of service and its mission of improving Schenectady one home at a time. During that 46 years of work, BNI has built or rebuilt hundreds of homes in the city, making Better Neighborhoods one of the city's largest private developers. During that period, we have also counseled thousands of residents regarding either purchasing a home or preventing foreclosure of a home. During this year, we have currently four homes under construction and five on the market for sale to our clients, all of whom are residents of modest means. This year so far, we have also counseled over 100 families regarding their housing needs. In the consolidated plan budget, we requested about $300,000 to perform three basic tasks. One, rehabbing housing for clients who, through illness or injury, would otherwise have to leave their homes. Two, the continued function of housing counseling. And three, to support our administrative function. Regrettably, as you've heard many times tonight, there's not enough money to go around, and Better Neighborhoods has been allocated or keyed to have only about two-thirds of the funds that we've requested. We believe we can provide and accomplish more housing improvements for households of low and moderate income through higher funding levels, and we believe we perform these services in a very efficient and economical manner. Finally, I want to thank you and emphasize that we look forward to our continued partnership with the city and other community partners to solve the city's housing problems. Thank you, and all in with 10 seconds to spare.
Yes. Thank you.[1529.83][1529.83](APPLAUSE). Well done. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak for this public hearing, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. We will move on to the second public hearing regarding a moratorium on convenience stores. Robert Harvey.
Good evening, honorable ladies and gentlemen. My name's Bob Harvey. I live on Plymouth Avenue in Schenectady. I am the President of SUN, which stands for Schenectady United Neighborhoods, a coalition of 10 of Schenectady's neighborhoods. Our members have expressed concerns about both the proliferation and the saturation of convenience stores in Schenectady and the accelerating number of episodes calling for needed police response. Also, though many convenience store owners do provide the benefits of old-fashioned corner stores, there are a number of them that detract from the quality of life in the area, whether from litter left near the storefront, or from loiterers hanging out, or arguments leading to violence, or just a trashy look in their appearance. SUN supports the concept of a temporary moratorium in issuing permits for business, new permits for business, for additional convenience stores, so that more data can be collected and analyzed, while also supporting efforts by code enforcers, city police forces, and the fire department inspectors to address present problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
P. D. Vorus.
My name is P. D. Vorus, and I live in the city. While I do support a moratorium on these corner stores, it's the first time I've ever heard this happen. It's been done before, but not officially, because we had a different drugstore in every corner. And I think it was two or three years ago that the planning committee came down on that venture. What has disturbed me about this was that the day the mayor was inaugurated, this was the headline the next day. Just remember, January the 17th, he was inaugurated into office, and it says, "New Business." Excuse me. The mayor touts new business puts corrupt corner stores on notice. I think that was really uncalled for, to charge them with being corrupt, to charge any of them without being corrupt. If they're corrupt, they are out of business because the police have caught them and done their job. We have been through this with drugstores. Nobody called them corrupt when they wanted a moratorium, an unspoken moratorium. We have food stores now, food wars. Nobody knows where to go to anymore to save money, and you can burn, well, we're having food wars. Nobody's calling a moratorium on them. And as far as corner stores, the next picture in the newspaper was of Mr. The Mayor's friends that he invited for his inaugural speech, his state of the city. They all own corner stores. So I think you ought to be careful of what you say to people. Serial pluralism is the breakfast of champions.
Carmela Rishudo.
Hi, I'm Carmela Rishudo, and I'm representing for the East Front Street neighborhood. And about a month ago, there was a gentleman that wanted to put in a convenience store, a Dunkin' Donut, and a garage, or a gas station, I should. a Dunkin' Donut, and a garage, or a gas station, I should say. And it was proven that he shouldn't be doing this. Now, from what I understand, I haven't gotten the full plans on it yet. He is coming back again. We have nothing against a store moving in. We need a market in our area someplace. But the thing of it is, we have three other convenience stores in our section. We need something on a bigger line than a convenience store, and we would really appreciate if we could be recognized this time and if you people would realize what we're going through with the gathering and the gangs and the kids. Like that one lady said, you shouldn't be pointing fingers, but when you witness it, it makes it worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Reitmeyer.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Judy Reitmeyer, and I'm the director of the Capital District Tobacco-Free Coalition. And I'm here to talk about the health impacts of convenience stores and what they do to a community. I think you all are aware that the city of Schenectady has a smoking rate of 37 percent. And just in comparison, New York State's smoking rate is 16 percent. So the city has more than twice the smoking rate than what the state has as an average. We also know that smoking rate is dependent on many things, one of which is the density of the number of places that sell tobacco. So the higher the density of tobacco retailers, the more tobacco retailers there are, the higher the smoking rate. That's been researched and been proven. We also know that the amount of marketing of tobacco that young people see, the more likely they are to smoke. And that marketing is particularly targeted. It's been shown that it's disproportionately targeting the vulnerable populations, the young, the racial and ethnic minorities, and those with low education and income. So those are the kind of the factors that are leading in part to that high tobacco use rate. And then to look at the city of Schenectady and how many places sell tobacco, and many of those are convenience stores. So in Schenectady County, there's 186 places that sell tobacco. So in the whole county, 186, 155 of those are in the city. So we know that you have more than, I didn't do that proportion, I meant to do that proportion before I got up here, but it's a lot. It's certainly much more than half of all the places that sell tobacco are in the city. So there's things that we can do. Municipalities have the right to limit the time, place, and manner of the sale of tobacco. They can license, they can say that you need to have a license to sell tobacco. Now, you know, this is connected to the convenience store, certainly, because most of the convenience stores sell tobacco. So you can license them, you can limit the number of licenses that are given, you can say no licenses will be given to any place within so many feet of a school, or you can say no licensing, you can put a cap on the number of licenses. And there are communities in New York State that have done this. The city of Binghamton just passed a zoning ordinance that said no tobacco retailers near schools. Rochester also did a zoning ordinance that said no tobacco retailers, no, they actually was more about convenience stores and ones that sold alcohol, tobacco, or gambling, or lottery, and they couldn't be within 500 feet of each other. So there's precedence, and five seconds, and I think that's it. So if you want more information, I can sit next to you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on this public hearing, so I'm declaring that hearing closed.
[inaudible]
No, you didn't.
I'm anticipating on affirmative action.
All right, this was just about the convenience stores, yes. Okay. At this point, I'll entertain approval of the minutes from April 14th. Mr. Kosher?
[inaudible]
Okay. Okay, Ms. Parazzo, second. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? All right. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, April 28, 2014. Under official, a letter from Christopher Wallen, city engineer, recommending the award of the Hot In Place Asphalt Recycling to Highway Rehabilitation Corporation of Brewster, New York. A letter from Christopher Wallen, city engineer, recommending the award of the City of Schenectady 2014 Paving Program to Empire Paving of Schenectady. A letter from Carl Olson, Commissioner, recommending the award and purchase of sodium hydrochloride bulk liquid chlorine for 2014 pool season to surpass Chemical Company, Inc. of Albany, New York. A letter from Paul LaFon, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of the 2014 Water Source and Water Treatment Plant Protection Construction Project to the lowest bid made by Apots Construction Company, LLC of Schenectady, New York. A letter from Paul LaFon, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of the engineering services for North Ferry Street Pump Station replacement to the lowest responsible bid made by MJ Engineering and Land Surveying PC of Clifton Park, New York. Under general, a letter from Schenectady County Council of Veterans Organizations inviting city council members to attend their Memorial Day service on May 26, 2014 at Bell Cemetery at 10:30 a.m. A letter from Gold Star Mothers and Schenectady County Council of Veterans Organizations inviting city council members to support their Gold Star Mother service on May 18, 2014 at Evergreen Memorial Park Cemetery at 2 p.m. Under petitions, a petition for the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association noting their support for granting CD BG funds in the amount of $4,000 for part-time staffing at Steyman's Park.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Any committee reports? Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. And, you know, it's on the agenda tonight about the Affirmative Action Advisory Board, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls about it, and a lot of different conversations swirling around about, not necessarily the makeup of the board, but there were some concerns about the last, about some comments that were made at our last committee meeting. And I want to really clarify that, in terms of asking for resumes, we were really specific in terms of who would, the different categories that the legislation asks for, which are women, minorities, Hispanic, disabled, a veteran, and I think those were the five specific categories. Beyond that, we did not, we weren't very specific in that. And in terms of why we need the Affirmative Action Advisory Committee, it's a fact, it's a statistic, that the city of Schenectady has a 95 percent rate of non-minorities that work for the city, so therefore, it's about 5 percent of minorities. And in our paving and contracts that we get, the rate, in some of our contracts, they haven't met it at all, and others, very low. So to have a comment made that there was not enough non-minorities to, that applied for it, was troubling for me, as well as for people that I received phone calls from. And essentially, what is going on is that the protected class, which affirmative action covers, is not being employed or getting contracts within the city. So the purpose of the affirmative action board is to make sure that those protected classes are included in hiring and included in getting the contracts. And to minimize the participation of minorities on the board is counterproductive. It just doesn't make sense. So, you know, I don't think that we should be able, we should solicit or ask for applications and resumes from a specific group in order to qualify that. My colleague mentioned he had a problem with that, that the number of non-minorities. I looked at all the resumes, I received them all, and we had outstanding, well-qualified people, people with masters, people with MBAs, two-years degrees, some people with just a passion for the community. And that's all we were asking for, is for people to come that were interested, that were qualified. We never asked a question about race, and so to have that question brought up was troubling for me, and that's what I think that was, a question about race. And that should not be. He said he thought that the boards should have a balance and should have diversity. So it prompted me to look at all the boards that the city of Schenectady has or has the opportunity to appoint people to. And I have a handout for all committee, for all council members. And the boards go from having 50 percent minority participation or non-minority participation. And we have some boards that have 100 percent non-minority participation. So it's not spread out, so maybe that's something else we should take a look at. So, you know, diversity inclusion and inclusion is what we're trying to make happen here. So to have a comment to say that we need to balance the board, or we have to have more non-minorities, basically says, is a slap in the face to the people who submitted their resumes based on the fact that they were qualified and wanted to be a part of this board. And I don't think that we should bring into the fact, we should say, well, we need certain people of another race in order to be there. That is not what we should be about. It's not anything that has come before this council before, and it troubles me that it's before this council now. We're just talking about protected classes, and to say that non-minorities are not represented or there aren't enough on a specific board, as I said, I had problems with that, you know, and so now we should look at the makeup of all the boards, and I have the handout for people, for us to all look at, and that's what we should be considering, all of the boards. If it's a problem for one board, then it's a problem for all of a board. But again, the purpose of the affirmative action board is to make sure that these protected classes are included, and we get our numbers up and improve them where they aren't right now. So, you know, that's really all I have to say on it, and we should, I think we should move forward with the resumes. They're very, very qualified, 23 very qualified people. Okay, the mayor says if they're outside the city, okay, that knocks us down to 19. So other than that, people are extremely qualified, and they should be chosen based on their qualifications, and nothing beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? If not, I will declare this portion of the meeting closed. We will move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have seven people signed up to speak. The first is Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Protem, I want to echo on the affirmative action board. I want to thank Marion Porterfield, Councilwoman Porterfield. The recommendations came from the county's affirmative action and the city's affirmative action manager, which was to take the disabled community out of the ordinance, and I want to thank her very much for her hard work to make sure that discrimination did not occur and that it was put back in. The Section 503 regulations, which is federal funding of hiring persons with disabilities, has been zero in this city and in this county both. DOL just came out with new regulations and went into effect as of March 24th, and that is supposed to be, 7 percent of all federal funds projects are supposed to be hiring of persons with disabilities. We have a major problem within this community of giving money to these contractors, and these contractors says, well, I'm not hiring anyone because I already got my crew. Well, no. If you take on the project for the city, then that, and you need, you have 100 people to do that job, then 7 of those have to be disabled that are qualified, not just because they're disabled, but have to be qualified for that piece. We have to have a job description of both primary and secondary job functions. The primary functions can be reasonable accommodations, I mean, the primary cannot be reasonable, but the secondary can be made reasonable accommodations. You must have these put into effect. And every single year, you have, and then on top of all, minorities. We have 15 percent African-American, we have 5 percent Hispanic, and 2 percent Asian. We have to mirror close to that piece, and we're not even meeting those goals. We also have, with our governmental jobs, we have constantly, where the unions have constantly have used civil service to deny jobs to minorities and to the disabled. And, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. The mayor turns around and appoints people temporary, and then under union rules, as soon as 60 days are over with, now they're considered under union houses. So now they turn around, and if that business becomes open, under union rules, those people have first jobs, first grabs at them. Wait a minute, you just bypassed affirmative action. You bypassed a civil service exam. You bypassed everything. Because what happens is that these people will then have one year to pass a civil service exam in order to maintain their full-time position. And so all you do is participate, the 95 percent discrimination. If you want to diversify the workforce, you're gonna have to diversify across the board. And I'm hoping that this affirmative action board will start working on jobs. I know it can work on housing, work on voting rights and everything else, but I think the first concentration should be on jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Ruschido.
I'm not sure if I can talk. You pulled about the casinos. Can I still make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Mary Ann Ruschido. I'm from East Front Street. East Front Street is the little neighborhood that's tucked between the alcohol project and the stockade. I'm gonna start by saying, when I heard about the Galisi Group, I was grumbling and mumbling about this big organization that I did not like, and they weren't communicating with us, and I was very upset. Then I went to the planning board meeting, when they presented the conceptual plan, and this gentleman got up and spoke, and I looked at him, and I said, this can't be David Boyko, he's too nice. I thought he was a big, old, grumpy man, but he really isn't. He's a very nice man. And the conceptual plan that they put, our neighborhood is very, very excited about. So we wanted to make sure that you all knew about this, too. And as for the casino, most of us are very excited about having the casino come into. We're very much for this, and I don't know what else to say, but it's very exciting. It truly is very exciting for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. P. D. Vorus.
I just wanted to comment on the affirmative action. Remember, Ms. Porterfield, this was your impetus. You had the input into this that made it necessary. I think Miriam does a fine job. I want to congratulate her. I don't think anybody has any comprehension, or not many people have a comprehension of how difficult her job is and how far-reaching it is. It's not as local as you want it to be. I'm dismayed with the verdict on the pump house, but I can believe it. And I think the worst part is now that they can't demo that building and build something compatible there, and I don't, I think they need to be careful who the architect is and what it looks like. But they are going to have to remove everything. If they're going to use it for some other feature for the stockade, they're going to have to take everything out of that building and rework it, and the city's gonna have to pay the bill for that. So that's what happens when you have nice toys that just get depleted in one way or another. It's still up to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. M. A. Wahid.
Madam President, respected council members, eminent champion of the minorities, Madam Marion Porterfield, I humbly submit my application to be considered as a member on the Affirmative Action Council. We moved from India 24 years ago to Schenectady, and Indians believe in rebirth, and I believe our rebirth took place in Schenectady, and this is a land of rebirth now. We've raised our five children here, they've gone to Schenectady High, and we have built our businesses here. We run two restaurants in the downtown area, serving the community, and we are very proud to be Schenectadians. In terms of my personal educational qualifications, I've got a degree in journalism and a degree in hospitality, masters from Fairleigh Dickinson University. I have done a lot of social work with the Indian Association, and there is a growing Asian community in the area from And there is a growing Asian community in the area from Bangladesh, India, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Nepal, and other countries. And I wish to project their aspirations in collaboration with Madam Porterfield's vision for helping minorities be productive and constructive in the town of Schenectady, which is seeing a tremendous renaissance in terms of development. In the 24 years that I have been here, I can recall how we have gone almost 360 degrees towards a positive change. And I think leaders like you have made a big difference. In a very humble manner, I wish to share a slight task, a slight burden, and work with Madam Porterfield, shoulder to shoulder, brick by brick, in building a wall of fame in this town of Schenectady that we will all be proud of. The champion of nonviolence, Mahatma Gandhi, has said that even if you are a minority of one, the truth is always the truth. And we shall stand and work for that. And thank you all for the opportunity to give me a hearing ticket.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
Last week, the Supreme Court ruled that racial preferences are not permitted for affirmative action. Ms. Kajus told counsel that affirmative action applies to everyone. The councilwoman has insisted that two Hispanics be appointed to the board. Her position is a violation of the 14th Amendment. Nowhere in the ordinance that was drafted for tonight's agenda does the word diversity appear. It's all about specifics. That's unlawful. Counsel is off on the wrong foot with this issue. It started when counsel gave the empty seat to someone who already had a job. It's been downhill ever since. On another note, items 13, 14, 15, and 16, I visited all the mail sites last year. There are lost opportunities in the program. The program should offer more than free lunches. In the agreement, the city must insist that those authorized to be there need to clean the space every day before they leave the park. And lastly, I was told that the Democratic candidate running for city council is going door to door telling voters that Republicans do not win in Schenectady. I submit to this ruling body that no one wins when the Democrats are in office. And item number three on tonight's agenda is a perfect example. City council voted to buy kias, money we don't have, and pay monthly rental fees on all the parking meters in the city, money we don't have because a few people are parking free beside some broken meters. Fix the meters. Stop spending taxpayers' dollars needlessly.
Thank you. Joe Callahan.
Good evening and thank you once again. A couple of points on number two. Marion, thank you very much. Some very good information there about that and especially what you had mentioned about the vets. You know, we have thousands of veterans coming home from Iraq, Afghanistan, who are in desperate need of finding new employment and who need the rehabilitation as well to acclimate them back to civilian life. It's a very difficult thing. I've been through it myself when I was in the Air Force. My son went through it when he was in the service as a Marine. And it's been very difficult for him to get acclimated because of the action that he's seen. But he's doing very well now and I'm so glad to see that. And to see the veterans have more opportunities and a chance for opportunities through affirmative action would truly be a benefit to all of us. We owe them a debt that many of us can never repay. As far as the resolution regarding the parking meters, I know that this was a point of contention between a lot of folks last year. And I know that it was mentioned on several occasions that some money had already been allocated and set aside for some of these meters, if I'm not mistaken. It'd be interesting to find out where the current funds are for those meters. And a point that I made last year, which I'd like to stress again, with the millions of dollars in unpaid parking violations in the meters, just taking these in alone would certainly pay for over and above what we would need. And it would truly be a benefit to the city to have those extra funds. The last thing I wanted to mention about was also regarding number five, which was taken off the agenda regarding the rezoning for the casinos and the gaming. Having lived in Saratoga for a good portion of my life as I grew up, Saratoga Springs benefited quite highly from the casinos that they have up over that way and from the gaming. However, there's a lot more that needs to be learned about it for here in Schenectady. And if it would truly be a benefit to Schenectady, it would truly be a benefit to have the jobs. However, we also need to learn a lot more and the public needs to understand more about what it would bring to the community as also regarding the economic impact. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Tom Bates.
May I hand out a summary of? My name is Tom Bates. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity. I'm an associate and a professional engineer with McDonald Engineers located in the Stockade section of Schenectady. We believe that the Schenectady's bid selection process for professional engineering services for the North Ferry Pump Station project was not completed in a fair and objective manner. I am respectfully requesting that the city council not award the engineering contract until the proposal review process is impartially evaluated and we are granted an interview. I've been an engineering professional for 35 years and the last 22 years I've been with McDonald Engineering. We have seven experienced professional engineers that have been providing engineering services to local communities for 24 years. We have been successfully, we successfully completed numerous water and wastewater treatment plants, recently completing a wastewater treatment plant in Amsterdam for $11 million and $18 million worth of upgrades for the Saratoga County wastewater pump stations. And over the past 15 years, we've successfully completed several complex projects for the city of Schenectady. In 2008, we were hired by the city to evaluate the North Ferry Pump Station and give recommendations of those improvements. In our 2008 engineering report, we recommended installation of specialized wastewater pumps. It would not be damaged if the pump were inundated and recommendations that the electrical and controls and generator be moved upstairs above the flood levels. The city asked us to proceed with the new pumps. However, due to budget constraints at that time, we were directed by the city to leave the electrical panels, controls, and generator in their present location. This was a very complicated project. And from this, we gained specific in-depth knowledge of the North Ferry Pump Station. And during that time, I was a project engineer. As designed when the 2011 flood came, the pumps were not damaged even though they were fully submerged. There was electrical damage because water came in on an inside wall and damaged the electrical equipment. Had it been moved up as originally recommended, there would be no damage and the plant would not have been out of service. The city most recently requested proposals for the replacement of the entire pump station while keeping and relocating those same pumps and controls in the new pump station. In response, we provided a proposal. Six proposals were received. The three lowest were $175,000, ours at $236,000, and the third at about $330,000. The review committee published these publicly and recommended that they be awarded to the lowest bidder at $175,000. The committee representing these three bids to the council, as they did, review processes misrepresented and misleading, as we were excluded from an interview. Even though our fee was the second low, the committee chose to interview two firms that fees from $94,000 to $184,000 more than ours. We were never contacted about our proposal or given an interview to explain what was included. We've learned that a rating system was used to dismiss our experience and move us out of position of an interview. This purely subjective rating system is open to personal and political bias. Because of the committee's evaluations, if the low bidder was unable to fulfill their work, the city would have skipped our bid and moved $150,000 or higher than the low bidder.
Mr. Bates, I need you to summarize, please.
Okay. In our proposal, we had included an option to move the equipment up at about a third of the cost of the $3.5 million estimated project. Because of our experience and specialized in wastewater and specific experience at North Ferry, we were asking the board to table any, the action on the award of this engineering contract until such time as a fair, objective, and unbiased selection process can be implemented in a fair and transparent manner. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Have no one else signed up to speak? Deborah, you did not sign up to speak on the agenda.
I know I did, but I want to say something. I didn't get a chance to sign up, but I do want to say something. I'm Deborah Remperd. And I wanted to say that I totally agree with everything that Marion Porterfield, as an activist in the community, and what Jason Plank and some of the other people have said about affirmative action. Because if these people are not able to, if minorities and women are not able to work, then they would be on the rolls of social services. And as the community has well stated, they don't want these people on the rolls of social services. And if you don't want them on the rolls of social services and you don't want them to work, well, what do you think is gonna happen to these people? Do you want them to perish? I think these people have a right, as a minority speaking for myself and for others, and I'm also disabled too, we have a right to work. If that's what we need to do and we want to be able to help ourselves in this community, we need to be able to work. And by making sure that families are not able to take care of themselves sufficiently is very unfair and unconstitutional. And I think that we need to start working better in this community to have people working and doing better in their lives so that they can have the quality of life that everyone else is enjoying. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now declare this portion of the meeting closed and we will move to the approval of the legislative agenda. Okay, Mr. Kosher moves it. Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Parazzo, rather, excuse me. All in favor? Aye. And we have one roll call vote.
Item number 24, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract for engineering services for the North Ferry Street pump station replacement.
All right. If you would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. And when we discussed this, well, let me just say tonight, I feel like I've been presented with some information that was not there when we discussed it in committee. And I personally would like to see us revisit this. You know, the fact that this particular firm that came up tonight did do part of the engineering report in 2008. And so, you know, I have some concerns and I would like to see it. Also, he brought up the point of the, which also was brought up in committee, about who got in for interviews. So I think there's some valid concerns here and that we could, I would like to see it taken back to committee. In the absence of that, I cannot comfortably with good conscience vote affirmatively on this. So my vote is no.
Mr. Erickson is absent. Mr. Riggi? Mr. Kosher? Sorry. Sorry. Mr. Kosher?
He's here.
I know. Who's? Mr. Riggi.
Mr. Bates brought up some interesting points. And I am concerned that there appears to be possibly a bias in some of these RFP acceptances. And I'm not quite sure what's going on, but I think it deserves to be looked at again. We have a firm that does business, their business is in the city of Schenectady. They're only a block or so from the pump house. And they made a recommendation and they're telling us that the pump house doesn't have to be replaced. It's a viable engineering firm for sure. And do we have to spend all this kind of money? That's been appropriated already, but there's just too many questions here for me in what's going on. Now, the McDonald's, they were told when they were the low bidder on the golf course that that isn't the only thing we're gonna go with is low bids, okay. Now that they're not the low bidder, now the low bidding seems to take precedence. So I think we have to get our act together in how we're gonna do business. But I also think that if we're gonna use a point system in evaluating firms, that certainly the hometown firm, there should be some extra points added for that, just like if you're a veteran or anything else. I just feel that at this point, I think we should look at this again. But if it, whatever way it goes with this vote tonight, I'm not sure. But for sure, I think in the future, we have to, I know the RFP process has been explained over and over and over. But sometimes when you look at the reviewing stats that were sent to us, it just, everything is so close. I don't even know how you could pick one from the other. It's very, very close. So anyhow, with that, I just won't know.
Mr. Kosher?
No. He said yes.
He said yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. . Mr. Mudavaren?
I do, like my two other colleagues, I do have some concern about this also. Here we have the second lowest bidder and they were not even invited for an interview. And here we get a consider, this is a local organization with a very experienced engineer. And I am not happy to proceed with this tonight and as we pull this back in committee. And I will vote present.
Are you voting no, Mr. Mudavaren? You're voting no?
No.
Okay. All right.
For the record, your vote is no?
Yes.
Ms. King?
I guess, I mean, I feel that a process was followed. We had people who understand this whole situation and they made a recommendation to us. And it's a firm that has worked more recently on this project with the flooding recent, you know, past years. So it's clearly going to be a 3-3 vote. I will vote aye, but we will put it back in committee. I'm also concerned that we are under some time constraints. This is a really precarious situation we are dealing with, that we can't delay this much longer. So, okay. So we'll send it back to committee.
All right. We will now then move on to privilege of the floor regarding city business. And I have 12 people signed up for this. The first is Joe Rodriguez.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to say that whoever lives on Vern Curler Street has a big clout because they had two water mains and their street was maintained very well after the breaks where they repaved or repaired their street evenly with the entire street. Now, a council member here did make a phone call or text one. And they came to Moisson Street and they patched up several holes and left a major one open and just left. And the whole city, I know Moisson Street is just a small street or whatever, and I hear that there's $400,000 for a half a mile. I don't know the whole complex of the story, but I have to say this. I hope that this year, out of the half mile that you gotta do, Moisson Street's two tenths of a mile, that it can be redone. I've been coming here for three years now complaining about the same situation, the curbs and the street. And also, the corner of Duane Street and Brandywine, which I said something on March 24th, and it's still there. I mean, how do you not take notice? I don't understand how no one can take notice of all that garbage. We talk about quality of life. How do you expect people to respect the neighborhoods if we, the city itself, doesn't care? I mean, I really don't understand. It's really sad. I mean, somebody was arrested last week for spitting down on downtown. If a candy wrapper is thrown downtown, they have five trucks coming. If a candy wrapper is thrown downtown, they have five trucks coming to pick up one candy wrapper, but we can't take care of anything above MVP? Think about it. You go above MVP, and you're in a whole different zone, war zone. You go below it, and you drop a candy wrapper, and you see six trucks there. Six trucks, seven employees, picking up one candy wrapper. Think about it. It's something to think about. You guys act like downtown and Metroplex itself thinks that downtown is the only section of town. If you had your way, I'm pretty sure you'll incorporate a village just for downtown, and forget about the rest. It'll be the town of Schenectady, and that'll be the village of Schenectady. Because you seem to worry about downtown more than you do in Vale, Hamilton Hill, and Mount Pleasant. It is very simple, because I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one that rides through this city and takes notice. Because in the future, I'm going to start filming it, so I could be like Price Shopper and say, next one, next one. So you guys can see, because you know how to look for the minority votes when it's time to be elected, but when it comes to Cal, we not hearing.
My name is Deborah Rembert. I'm here with the Group Stamp Tenant Association. President, I'm here to talk about an issue that is really permeating our community: bedbugs. The bedbug epidemic is really harming poor, defenseless family members. There are people that are living with this terrible situation, and it's not really being recognized or addressed. There are people that are living in Summit Towers, several people in Summit Towers have had a bedbug issue. And these people are asked to get rid of their belongings, such as their mattresses and box springs, and they're asked to get rid of their sofas. Some of these people are too poor to purchase new mattresses and box springs and sofa. And then these people are forced to sleep in a chair with their legs up on their table. And this is harming their health conditions, already terrible health conditions that these people already have. These people, their health conditions is going down. As a matter of fact, I have a friend that is an Eastern Star, and she is there, living in a terrible, horrible condition. And now she's in intensive care, because her health conditions have gotten worse because of the bedbug situation. She should have not been requested to get rid of her bedding, because now what was she supposed to sleep on? Why wasn't anybody thinking about the fact that this woman is very ill and needed a place to sleep? I think that is absolutely ludicrous to tell a person to get rid of their belongings and not provide them with anything else. There have been other people that have had bedbugs, and they have not had to get rid of their properties. I talked to Mr. Safara, who is over environmental in Health Department, and he said to me in our conversation that people do not have to get rid of their properties. However, landlords are being told to tell their tenants, get rid of your stuff, and provide them with nothing else, and these people have to sleep in a situation that is not conducive to their ailments and their, and their, their health conditions. It's not fair, okay? I just want to make sure that you know that. And I want to give a little room here for Lori to have something to say about some of these same issues. Now, another thing, I also want to talk about the streets. As this gentleman said, the streets are deplorable. We are suffering here with our cars damaged by these streets, by the streets not being prepared properly. It's horrible. People are, things are just not working well with that kind of situation. It's not working for us. We're damaging our cars, our cars are not able to work because of this kind of situation. One other thing, and I'm done, one other thing, I'm done, the banking situation should not be allowed to continue to, if a person has a cosigner the first time for their vehicle, okay? The bank should not be allowed to continue to ask them for a cosigner a second time for the same vehicle. That should end too. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank?
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Protem. Normally, I wouldn't speak on another speaker, because whatever their opinion is their opinion, but the facts are totally wrong. And that is, the Supreme Court, when they ruled on that piece in California on Hispanics, it was because the Hispanics were more than 50% at the college. That's the reason why they did not, are not to receive affirmative action. That goes back to a racist, and it goes back to discriminatory remarks of the Foley Love case, when they started saying, oh, no, the courts want a quota system. Affirmative action is not a quota system. Affirmative action is equalizing the playing field. And Hispanics within this community have also, have discrimination, and they deserve a seat at the table to help to equalize the field. And, I mean, they represent 5% of this community, and they have every right to be on this committee. And, you know, to misquote a Supreme Court case is totally wrong. We're trying to deal something of leveling the playing field, and I believe Mrs. Porterfield is doing the best job that she can under the circumstances of the discrimination that's been occurring for the last 10 years. My final, my comments was on the Section 108 loan. Both the Times Union and both the Gazette reported that this mayor's administration had screwed up the application. Well, it was screwed up even before it was even started, because it didn't even have a public hearing on it. It didn't have a direction of where it's going to be doing. This is money that's got to be paid back by the taxpayers, the $3 million. Half a million dollars is going to a private developer who doesn't even have a cost-benefit analysis done on the property. How much money is he going to make? What's his return on investment? We don't even know what the figures are. We're just going to say, oh, here's a half a million dollars, hey, take the money and run. And that's exactly what we're doing. We've done it on Center City with $2.5 million with the same developer. We did it on the Clinton Street project, $1 million, and we're doing $5 million on the Alco project, which now he wants to put a casino on it, and a whole bunch of other things. No affirmative action, no affirmative housing. We have an affordable and a housing problem. The Gazette just wrote an article about a month and a half ago, that the Capitol District area, we are the worst county in the Capitol District area on affordable housing. We are the worst county on affordable for rent. The average one-bedroom apartment in this county is $705. Now, I mean, the average SSI is a little over $800. The average SSD is approximately right around $1,000 or $1,100. So $700 is going to a one-bedroom apartment? We need to start addressing some of the problems that we've got here. And this Section 108 needs to go right back to the drawing board, and we need to actually take a look at how we're going to spend this money, and not frivolously just throw it away. Thank you.
Marva Isaacs?
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association would like to thank everybody for Earth Day, and Rockwood for Habitat Humanity, and DeCaracas, and other volunteers from GE, City of Schenectady Parks Department, City of Schenectady General Services, Councilwoman Marion Porterfield, Councilman Vince Riggi, Better Neighborhoods, Retreat Schenectady, and Community Builders. They came out and cleaned Burrell Park for us on Earth Day, and I thank them very much. And thank you, Mr. Riggi, thank you, Marion Porterfield. Thank you.
P. D. Vorus?
I want to speak about Mohawk Harbor and the rendition that's been proposed, that's been showed to all of us through the Gazette. I know it's in flux, there are a lot of changes, I admit to that, but I really think there's been a lot said about water around here and about drainage, particularly in that area. And in Schenectady with the old drain system sewers, where property owners are going to have to be responsible for their own repairs, and they'll be very costly. I have another concept of what I think ought to be done. I think our canal system is old, too old, too expensive to be repaired. We're going through too much water due to global warming. It's this flooding all over. And I checked on the canal system, and the canal system was started in 1825, and then it was renovated and updated in 1903. That still makes it over 100 years old. During this severe flooding that we've had, and we've had two to three occasions, it doesn't even seem like it's a temporary fix when it comes to everyday living anymore. Locks eight through 17 were closed, I believe, for a period of three to eight months. That's a, that's a long period of time. I don't think we can be making a whole lot of money commercially on the lock system. Recreationally, it's a plus, it's there, it will always be a plus. And I'm not suggesting that anything be done to alter that. However, I do think commercially, we don't need a lock system anymore. In fact, it's a dual system, federal and state. And I would, I would think that there'd be an awful lot of jobs could be made in removing those locks and creating a natural flow of water from wherever it comes, and it also will give us a clearer understanding of what the water situation really is, that we're going to have to live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Smith?
Good evening, Commissioner Bennett, President King, City Council members. I'm Patricia Smith, I'm Vice President of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, and we would like to make several announcements. Saturday, May 3rd is Mount Pleasant Cleanup Day and Bottle and Can Recycling. Volunteers will meet at Norwood and Skyler Avenue Tennis Court Parking Lot at 8:30 a.m. for orientation and supplies. Donation of work gloves, trash grabbers, waters, packages of individually wrapped cookies, chips, soda juice, Gatorade, and other non-perishables will be accepted and muchly appreciated for our volunteers on Cleanup Day, at the tennis courts on Norwood Avenue, at the 10th and Webster Park, Grouse Park, Orchard Park, and the Mount Pleasant Athletic Field. On Thursday, May 8th at 7:00 p.m., a community emergency preparedness night will be held at the Faith Deliverance Tabernacle Church at 1028 Osteander Place. Speakers are from Schenectady County Public Health Services, Lisa Whitman, RN BSN Public Health Nurse Preparedness Program, and June Schultz, RN BSN Public Health Nurse Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator, will speak on what we should do in the event of a catastrophic event in our neighborhood. On Saturday, April 26th, Retree planted 10 trees on Norwood Avenue. With special thanks to Betsy Henry in charge of Retree, Joe Vitali of the city and his crew for delivering trees, water, mulch, and tools very early that morning. Also, thank you to the volunteers, including Councilmember Mr. Riggi, who helped to make this an easier task. We'd like to thank Dunkin' Donuts of Rotterdam, who donated coffee and donuts for us. Also, on April 26th, with Sicum Community Day, and Cleanup by the Volunteers was a tremendous task. Also, we welcome people to come and enjoy the cherry blossoms going up Crane Street Hill and on Michigan Avenue at the Big Rock Park near 890. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed Hafiz?
Good evening, Madam President, Councilmembers. My name is Mohammed Hafiz, and I live in Schenectady. I'm here again to speak about the water ladder program proposed by the city. John is laughing here. While the city's not taking any action on the proposal, a company is soliciting business in Schenectady to do just that, replacing water ladder. But this company, which is called, I don't know if I should say the name here aloud, you know, they settled in the past several complaints brought by Attorney Generals in three different states, in Kentucky, Ohio, Massachusetts. Also, Las Vegas has similar complaints about the company. So buyers beware. The Schenectady homeowner should think twice about signing up with this company. I think the city should look into this matter and perhaps issue a statement or a warning to Schenectady Property Order about buying coverage with this company. There's also another company which has, which has a better reputation that's looking to do business with the city. And the way they do it is they approach cities around the states, and at no cost to the city, they start doing this program with a charge to property owners. So I urge City Councilmember to look into this matter and come up with suitable program. It's really needed and beneficial to property owners, landlord, and it's not too difficult to do. And I do have some, I do have a copy of the letter that's sent by this company to city resident. It looks, it looks like it's sent to Schenectady property owners, which, and somebody had given me the letter, and I also have another copy of the proposal from that other company. So please distribute that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mary McLean?
Did everyone see the notice by the Associated Press as to what happened in Holland on Saturday? The Dutch donned orange-colored outfits and celebrated. That is what I promoted during the campaign last year. Some Democrats thought my outfit was ridiculous. That's unfortunate. Earlier this evening, I said the voters do not win when Democrats are in office. It's impossible to work a 40-hour week, attend classes, do homework, go on out-of-town junkets for a primary employer, and still give quality time to serve on City Council. The stories in the Gazette last week showed how poorly the city is being run. City officials are claiming ignorance. They said they did not know about the HUD entanglements or the parking meter holdup, but they voted for everything. There was only one story with a positive note. It told of the good results the police department is having with the program now in place. I suggested the program during my campaign last year. That is more than what the community is getting from last year's successful candidate who was promoting jobs. She's telling people to take a civil service test. I know where the jobs are, but I'm not going to tell her. She won the seat, now it's time to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher?
Yeah, we all do, my friend, we all do. Good evening, and thank you once again. Very quickly, just a couple of things that are happening in the area. I know that the, one of the last times that I spoke here at City Council, I had asked about a proposal to put a bin for collections of retired American flags, not only to be properly retired by the American Legion Post 1092 on Upper Union Street, but also to be used for Stars for Our Troops. And as a matter of fact, I just happen to have one, I think, it's in my pocket, yes it is. These are, where they, we cut the flags up and remove the embroidered stars, so that we can give them to active and military and veterans to thank them for their service. It reads, "I am a part of our American flag. I have flown over home in the USA. I can no longer fly. The sun and wind have caused me to become tattered and torn. Please carry me as a reminder, you are not forgotten." So we're looking to get some more of these flags, so that we can properly cut them up and distribute them to people of, who are in the military all over the country. Flag Day is coming up, and we'll be retiring a lot of the flags at a ceremony at Post 1092 on Upper Union Street. Also, my, my wife, as is President of Central State Neighborhood Association, she's going to be having a cleanup and organizing a cleanup on State Street between Brandywine and Furman, and they're meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning, is that, 10 o'clock in the morning, at the empty lot next to the Orchid Rest- at the empty lot next to the Orchid Restaurant at the corner of State Street and Brandywine. We're also asked, so we're asking members of the community as well as some of the local businesses to partake and help to clean up the area. That's all that I have. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Benita Cade.
Once again, I come back to let you know that we really do need, that stop light up there, that stop, the crossing signal is what we need. They have one up on Hamburg and...
Hamburg and Altamont Avenue.
Altamont Avenue where there's not that much traffic. I can't see why, we cannot have one down on Brandywine and Albany Street. Once again, I'm asking you to put one there so I can feel better about that street. I mean, I, my parents lived, bought that house, my sister's behind me, we bought that house in '65 and that, that street has gotten terrible. But there was just another ask, an accident up there. Something needs, really needs to be done with that street. And I'm gonna tell you something, I'm not gonna have these nightmares because of my son, okay? It's not fair. I can live with, live in there if I know that I don't have to worry about somebody else's child. And unless you lose your child like this, then maybe, you know, it doesn't bother you as much. But if you lose your child, like I lost mine, then maybe it would bother you a whole lot more and somebody will actually do something about this. And I need to make a clarification from the last two times I was here. My son was 45 years old, not 47, and I never said anything about State Street and the Picard Park in there. But what I did say was, I would like to have those right-on reds taken down and cross hit signals put up, and I thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Richard Parsons. No? Okay. Baratha June? No. Barak Arjun? No. Okay. I have no one else then signed up to speak on city business. I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Prazzo.
Hi, yes, thank you. Although it seems like it was almost the last meeting, it seems like a long time ago. I thank Reverend Grigsby for the invitation to do the Sicum Lunch Program. I think we should bound, band together as council. I volunteer for it every year with the Rotary and it really is a wonderful experience and it's good to see what a well-oiled machine the program is and how many children come through there and how appreciative they are. As far as the, the public hearing for the moratorium this evening, thank you for everybody who came down. You know, very often when we have public hearings, we don't really get much feedback, so that was very, very helpful. Of course, the, the feedback for CDBG too, but specifically the moratorium falls under my committee. Just a moment to talk about the bid process. I feel as if, as a council, we were presented with this bid. We've, I've spoken tirelessly about the bid process, one-on-one with Mr. Wallen and Mr. Winkler, and went through it with a fine-tooth comb. And we had all of the opportunity in the world to ask questions at the council meeting. They explained why they chose the people that they did for the interviews. I know that President King sat in on the interviews and I didn't want to take the time and go back and quantify my vote, but, you know, I think that we have professionals that work for the city that put a lot of hard work and time into making these decisions and I stand by their decision. With regard to the downtown garbage, certainly we have litter issues in the city and I don't want anyone to think that I am, you know, minimizing those issues. I know especially now that snow has melted, Mr. Olson is trying to get around in between filling potholes with the street sweeper to clean things up. But I also think that making statements that are fair is the right way to go. As far as downtown Schenectady, first of all, obviously we know seven trucks don't come out to clean one candy wrapper. I also want to bring to light the fact that the merchants of the cities of, City of Schenectady pay the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation for cleanup services within downtown. That is not the city going out there and cleaning. That is a service that the merchants pay through their assessment, the DSIC, to clean up downtown. So I want to make that part very, very clear. We also have very active neighborhood associations that work tirelessly to clean garbage around the city, one of which just happened to convene on Jerry Burrell Park recently. So although I think concerns about litter are valid and, and I, you know, think that everybody should step up and help more and more, including the city, when we can, when we have the resources, I also think it's just fair to be fair when making your statements and complaints. And lastly, I just want to say that the graffiti program is starting. Everybody cross your fingers that it's not going to rain, first of all, because we have a great cleanup in Mount Pleasant scheduled for Saturday. And so the graffiti covering efforts will focus in Mount Pleasant for that day, so we have a nice, well-rounded day of not only cleaning up brush and garbage and all of that, but painting over that graffiti in some of the buildings that have been identified by the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association and then, you know, others that have been identified for the city. So I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Michelle Darby and the Foundation for Suicide Prevention on a walk that they did this past weekend. They had, well, they counted 85, it looked like over 100, but I'll go with their number, of people that walked to, it was called Out of the Darkness, to bring awareness to the, to suicide and to help to get rid of the stigma of it. So a lot of people walked. It was a diverse group of people because it's something that touches many people regardless of their ethnicity, social, economic status, all of those things. It touches people's lives. So this was the first walk in Schenectady, so I want to congratulate that group on, on doing that. We did have someone from Stuyman's Park come and ask about the $4,000 in funding. And I just want to clarify on behalf of Mr. Erickson, because he's asked me to do that, that his concern was not about the, whether it was a good use of money, because he agrees that it is, but only the process of what we were doing in terms of the CDBG voting and that. So he just wanted to make it clear that he very much supports the Stuyman's Park project. I received a phone call from someone regarding the, that trees are being cut down in certain neighborhoods. And the ask is that if the trees are coming down, there'd be notification to the neighbors to make sure that they know that the trees are coming down because based on someone's looking at it, they felt that the tree was not diseased, but unless you're a professional that knows that. But at least to notify the neighbors that the trees are, are coming down and maybe perhaps a schedule of when that's going to happen, especially if it's happening in someone's neighborhood. Mr. Rodriguez brought up the concern about litter and actually there was a, an article in the newspaper about community pride begins with cleaning up after ourselves, which is something I agree with, but it takes entirely, the entire community to participate. It's about community participation and we all have to work on this. I feel that as, as a city, we could work together to start at the level of the city to send out the message about cleaning up litter. But again, it's everyone's concerns, everyone's problem. And if we want to attract people to the city, it is something that we, an issue that we really want to take and take very seriously. We've been talking with some of the neighborhood associations and Mr. Reiki and I have talked about even going into the schools and talking to the young people about it and addressing that. And the article also mentions trash cans and one of the things that our neighborhood, the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association has done was to, on Albany Street, to go talk to the business owners, talk to the residents and about getting trash cans. We've been successful in that and so there's been donations made and we're going to work with the city to get those trash cans installed because we can talk about it, we also have to make an effort to do something about it. So that's where the effort's starting and we're willing to work with any other neighborhood associations that want to, to address this very major concern. And I just want to also say thank you to all the people that came out for the cleanup. It was very successful and we'll continue to do it until it's no longer required. So thank you again.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Reiki.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of things. I thank everybody for coming out tonight to speak. It was, we got a lot of input, that's for sure. Now about the bedbugs, I know Ms. Bremper's been bringing this up for a long time. I'm not sure what we can do about it. I really don't know and I've told Deborah that also, but if we can do something about it, maybe we should look into it because it is an epidemic, there's no question about that, that we're living with. I talked to Mr. Falatico about the, now that summer's here, the ice cream truck. Apparently they're not aware, at least to Mr. Dingeling that's coming around in Bellevue, that they can only vend on certain streets. They can't vend on major thoroughfares. That's a long rule that we've had, just secondary streets. And I know for sure he's been vending on Campbell Avenue quite regularly and the same with the noise that it brings. There's been quite a bit of noise, which is supposed to be under control and I'm sure the law office will be contacting them to make sure that's taken care of. The casino, I think we'll hear a lot about that before it's either said and done or put to bed finally or whatever's going to happen with it, but I have some strong feelings about it, but I think everyone should really look at the big picture. Everything up front looks real good and glorious, it's going to bring all this money in, all these jobs in, but there's a cost for everything. And I think we have to look at what it does to inner cities. And in my opinion, casinos do not belong in inner cities. They belong way out there in the Everons where there's no residents around whatsoever because there's a lot of things that go on with that. And I gotta say, I heard, my wife said she heard Congressman Tonko today and he basically had the same views on this. So, and there was some good editorials in the TU and on and on. So we have to look at the whole big picture. I do remember being on the other side of the rail 10 years ago when we were selling tax liens to ATF. That was the panacea, that was going to save the city. Well, guess what? We know where we are now with that. So we have to look at everything and not just the big golden globe that may be put in front of us. Just an announcement for Bellevue Preservation, they're meeting Thursday, May 8th, 7:00 p.m., St. Paul's Episcopal Church on Fairview Ave. Their Neighborhood Garage Sale will be Saturday and Sunday, June 7th and 8th. For applications, call 374-0281, 374-0281. The Farmer's Market will be, have a grand opening Thursday, June 12th, 4:00 p.m., 2176 Broadway, that's the corner of Ontario Street, the Marineth and Ministries Parking Lot. That was successful last year and they're looking forward to giving it a go this year and it's, everybody should stop by and shop there because it's, it's quite amazing how that thing has went and took off, so I'm glad to announce that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner, anything from you? Okay. Just a couple of quick things from me. One, you said, mentioned the Farmer's Market. The Schenectady Farmer's Market moves outside this, this coming Sunday by City Hall, so that's a good thing. I also wanted to comment about the editorial in the Gazette today about the, us using email as a way of communicating with the CDBG. You know, that was simply a request for council members to give, give me their requests and thoughts in writing, so to create a basis for discussion. It's no different than the way we get requests and backup for every legislative cycle from department heads and then they, those, those reports then become the basis for our discussions. I don't view it as even any differently than if I had a telephone conversation with one of you and, again, just to get your ideas so that when we do meet, we've got things laid out, what people want us to talk about, and then we'll discuss them. Also need to mention that we're going to hold a special meeting of Government Operations Committee, Monday, May 5th at 5:00 p.m., in executive session to discuss health and safety recommendations. We have had a consultant working with city staff on health and safety issues and he would, would like to just give us a very brief report, you know, on what his observations have been so that we can then start to maybe look at some of the issues. Also, our council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, May 27th, is going to be held on Wednesday, May 28th, to accommodate the Board of Assessment Review Hearings. So just so everyone is aware of that, this happened last year as well. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Reiki, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Yes.